One minute. Is that right? Player. Right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome to Albany City Council Work Session, November 18th, 2024 at 4:00 PM. Would you have like a roll call, please?
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Newton Azor.
Present.
Counselor Kupcinski. Counselor Montague.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Thank you. Counselor Kupcinski notified me he would not be in tonight's meeting. Next on the agenda is business from the council. Keep in mind that business from the council is an opportunity for the public to speak with the city council.
Business from the public?
Business, I'm sorry, business from the public, thank you. Business from the public is an opportunity for the public to speak with the council. But it's a one-way conversation. We'll listen and take an under advisement. And during business from the council, as I previously stated, the council can respond in kind or as they feel necessary. So thanks to anybody signed up to speak this evening. Seeing no one, would anyone in chambers like to speak to the council? Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is FEMA's pre-implementation compliance measures. Jennifer Sapella will be speaking to us, page 2 through 27 of your packet. Packet, pretty much.
Minute here.
No worries.
Need to be enabled to share? Oh, I need to be enabled to share. Okay. So I'm Jennifer Sapella. I am a planner and floodplain manager here for the city of Albany. And I bring before you the pre-implementation compliance measures for the Oregon Biological Opinion again. Just a brief overview, in 2021, FEMA issued an Oregon implementation plan for the NFIP and ESA integration based on the 2016 Biological Opinion on the National Flood Insurance Program in Oregon. This past year, FEMA has begun its NEPA review and started working with Oregon shareholders on drafting an implementation plan. On July 15th of 2024, FEMA sent a letter to NFIP participating communities requesting that participating communities select and implement a pick 'em option by December 1st. In addition to implementation, communities must start tracking the implementation measures beginning January 31st of 2025 to be reported to FEMA on January 31st of 2026. The pick 'em applies to 31 of Oregon's 36 counties and applies to more than 250 NFIP participating communities, which consists of cities, counties, and towns. Albany has approximately 2,144 acres of land in the sensitive flood hazard area and approximately 411 buildings. The sensitive flood hazard area is also known as the 100-year floodplain. 1,260 properties, which comes to a total of 1,421 acres, are located within the residential zoning district. Of these 1,260 properties, 189 acres are currently owned by the city of Albany and approximately 70 lots are currently undeveloped residential land. There are 125 commercial or industrial zone properties located within the special flood hazard area. These 125 properties make up approximately 295 acres, of which 19 properties are currently undeveloped. The remainder is zone, sorry, is open space, and that consists of 763 acres. Based on the July 15th letter from FEMA, communities are required to choose and start implementing one of these options. These measures are intended to occur as the agency undertakes the National Environmental Policy Act, the NEPA review, to assess the effects of FEMA's proposal of the NFIP ESA integration efforts. Sorry. There are three options. One is the model ordinance, which is developed based on the current Oregon model ordinance. It includes performance standards to address protections of species and habitat that will achieve the no net loss. It includes mitigation ratios. The permit-by-permit habitat assessment, the applicant must develop a habitat assessment documenting their proposed development, which will achieve the no net loss. FEMA's regional habitat assessment guidance provides the methodology for conducting and reviewing this, and then prohibit development, which would allow no development in the floodplain. Brought before you today was also a letter that was received on November 14th of this year. In September 26th, Tina Kotek had written a letter to FEMA requesting a pause on these pre-implementation compliance measures, requesting that we just work on final implementation. On the 14th, FEMA responded to Governor Kotek's letter that said that pre-implementation measures are part of the federal deadline and cannot be paused. That concludes my presentation.
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Montague.
So I believe you were recommending the permit-by-permit option. Is that true?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And I believe last time I asked you this, but I'm going to ask again, is there a risk of uneven application of no net loss in that option? Or is, do you feel like that assessment guidance mitigates that risk?
So the mitigation requirements are the same. The model ordinance, you would adopt that specific language into your ordinance, whereas a habitat assessment can be geared and scaled more appropriately to each project. So both of them have the exact same end result.
Oh, okay.
The only one that's different is no development.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Smith was next.
Two questions. How much of the undeveloped, the undeveloped land is developable?
Quite a bit. So there are some areas that, for instance, Mennonite Village has two large parcels. And then there are some smaller ones, approximately two acres or less, but those are the two bigger ones.
Question number two. Well, I think we've just made this a moot point. I was going to ask if prohibiting all development would be viewed as a taking. I think I read something in the lengthy report saying that it had been ruled not a taking because it was an edict from on high or something.
It is a little unclear. I would want to probably resort to Sean Kidd on that one, because takings are kind of more of a legal issue.
So I think on any development that's already, any projects that have been developed, and they want to do more development on them, I think it would survive a takings under the, you know, the Fifth Amendment. If it was vacant land that was, development was prohibited indefinitely, then there, I think they could have some argument to that. But this isn't that. We were, and we're not using that option. I do know cities who are. And what they're doing is no new development until they adopt the model ordinance. But the model, they anticipate adopting the model ordinance either late February or March. So it's only going to be a couple of months. So it's not gonna, it wouldn't, wouldn't result in a taking. By the time someone filed a claim for that, then it'd be a moot point, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Novak was next.
I have an additional question now because I'm not familiar with that legal language. A taking, would you be so kind and define that for me, please?
But taking would be if a government prohibited any, any development or use of someone's property. And trying to think of a, there's probably better examples. I can remember the big, the big case when I was in law school, which was some time ago, which was in South Carolina, when after Hurricane Hugo hit and wiped out a lot of homes out there, the state came in and said that certain, certain properties could no longer be developed. And that, the people who own those properties brought a suit under, under federal law, under the Fifth Amendment for a takings. And actually, the, and the court held that it was a taking, that they could develop the property, so.
So they could build the homes, that, what that means is they could rebuild their homes on the site of property that they actually owned?
Yes.
And the government didn't have the right to tell them that they couldn't rebuild?
In that case, there, I mean, there, there, different cases go different ways. So it's not always that way. I mean, it's not always, now, if you bring a takings clause, you win. I mean, sometimes it's, if you, and actually, I've got to actually think about that for a second, Counselor, because now that I'm, now that I'm thinking about that case, I'm not 100% sure it came out that way. It's, like I said, it's been 20 some odd years ago since I, I read that case and dealt with it. It, it may have actually not been held to takings, because I, now I'm thinking about it, I want to say that those people that said, well, some of the justices said, well, you could put a tent on the property. You could use your property for something, because it's not completely prohibited from use. But in any event, I'll actually look the case up while we're here, and I'll, after, after the meeting, I'll tell you how it, how it turned out, so.
So then, may I ask you, with regard to how it applies to our situation in Albany, would the government doing a taking, or the fact that Counselor Smith says then this is not a taking, that means the government is not saying that we can't develop somewhere that we might want to develop? Is that how that applies? Or if it's not a taking?
I got confused. Well, let me, I'm not exactly sure what, what you just asked, but let me give you an example and see if that helps clear it up. So one of the properties that I, I think are in this, that fall in the zone right now, and Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, or David, is I think the Winkler property in North Albany. So I don't know, and it may have been before your time, we were on the council.
I know some Winklers.
It's a property off of Hickory. It's a, a big property off of Hickory.
I'm not familiar with where exactly they lived anymore, because it was decades ago that we went to school together.
Gotcha. Well, that property's in this, in the floodplain. And so if the city of Albany said, well, we're, we're going to adopt the, instead of doing the case-by-case approach, we're going to do no development until we adopt the model ordinance. And then we didn't adopt the model ordinance, and said, well, we'll adopt it in 10 years. At that point, the Winklers might want to bring a, might argue that they could bring a case against the city for a taking, because we're saying that they can no longer utilize their property. So that would be a.
Okay. If someone who lives in Albany does that, does that, are they then compensated for the loss of their property?
If they sue and they win, then yes. Or else they're allowed to build on it.
Okay, because I do remember reading in a couple places in this week's packet about fair and just compensation. And when there is no fair and, or was that for Wednesday?
That may be, you may be thinking, that sounds like eminent domain, which is.
Well, there was, there were just a couple references to when there would be no, I think it has to do with what we're, we're reading for Wednesday.
Okay.
Know, that, that whoever the person was would not necessarily be entitled to fair and just compensation, which doesn't sit very well with me, but.
Yeah, if it's, if it's not a taking, then they wouldn't, they wouldn't be entitled to compensation if the courts were determined it wasn't a taking, so.
Well, I appreciate the help and the explanation. And now I'd like to mention what I was originally going to put forward, which is, as I was looking at this, I know, and Counselor Montague's already pointed out, that staff recommends the case-by-case basis, and that is listed as option three. But I want to note that option three is not FEMA's pathway three. It's FEMA's pathway two, the way these things are listed out. And I guess I'm not the only one who saw that. I just want to make sure that if we're in agreement on something, that we're agreeing to the same thing. Because the options, and I don't, that's odd to me that they would list options in one order and pathways in another. Why not be consistent? But that's not your, you didn't write it, I know. I just thought it was moderately confusing, especially if we're trying to come to agreement here.
Correct. Yeah, so they kind of moved around some of the numbers for the options. The pathways will be part of the implementate, the final implementation, which should come down in 2027. And so they're doing different pathways in this, they're calling it options. But they did change the order numerous times. So they say, whatever option you're choosing to go with, make sure you state what it is, because.
So as long as we say permit by permit, if that's what we want, it doesn't matter what number it is, or whether it's an option or a pathway, they will respect the intent of, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Montague, Ms. Counselor McGee. Montague. Counselor McGee.
Is this going to be a permanent, if we decide to do the permit-by-permit, how long does that one last?
So any of these pre-implementation options last until the final implementation comes in, which they're proposing to be in 2027.
Is that the same? I see that they're pausing the changing of the floodplain maps. When are those to be reassessed? Or is that not till after 2027?
That is, well, so Benton County is currently doing their remapping, and they should be reaching out to us soon to show the council members and the Benton County commissioners the maps. And we can discuss those maps at those times. But the final maps for Benton County should come out 2027-ish. So it'll be around the same time.
Do we know about Lynn County?
They are not currently slated for new maps at this time.
You know when they are?
I asked, and I was not told the timeline yet.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Novak?
Yeah, I have two more things that I had written down. I just want to remind everyone that FEMA's definition of a serious flood hazard area is 1% or more chance in any given year. I think that's ridiculous myself. 1% or more chance. That's, that makes almost everything a floodplain. And then finally, we are required to have $582,710,000 in NFIP coverage. I'm wondering if someone can tell me how much the city pays for this coverage?
That is what FEMA covers. That's the NFIP. So when you are in the floodplain, you purchase floodplain insurance. And if you do that through the NFIP rather than private, that is the total amount for our community that FEMA is currently covering. So that's not anything we're paying for.
So that's all the households, all the?
Households and commercial businesses. And then they get a discount on that through our CRS program.
Okay, thank you. And our, so all of these houses that have to do this, all of these, whether they're apartments or whatever, they're in an area where there is a 1% or greater chance of a flood. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Counsel?
I just want to mention that I live just like three blocks from the river, not even. Probably, I'm not in a floodplain. If you look at the map, not everywhere in Albany is. But I just want to make sure for anyone listening, and that hasn't looked at the map, to know that not all of Albany is in a floodplain. It's only.
Right. And there are areas where we definitely have more than 1% chance of a flood. North Albany has flooded in various areas more than once, multiple times. And so I do have serious concerns about where we have a serious issue. But to say that 1% or greater chance is a serious flood hazard, that to me just lacks logic and reason.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, David. Next on tonight's agenda is airport economic.
Wait, Mayor?
Yes.
We do need a decision on which of the three options.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with your suggestion on the permit-by-permit basis.
Before we do the final.
We're not, we're just giving thumbs up.
Okay.
We're not voting on it today.
Does this in any way, if we do case-by-case, does that, does that advantage corporations who have huge amounts of money and can afford a habitat study where some private home builder is like going to just turn around and throw their hands up in the air and say, yeah, there's no way I can afford that? And, and that's the end of that?
So in asking these questions to FEMA, FEMA does not define professional. They said the professional could be the homeowner to do their own habitat assessment if they felt capable. Or the professional could be a professional biologist. And that's why the permit-by-permit seems to be better for our community, because we do have a lot of existing homes that might need to do some renovations, where the homeowner could do this on their own versus big lots that were wanting to do a large subdivision, that you might need something a little bit more from like a biologist. So it is something a homeowner could potentially do.
Thank you. You're off mic.
Permit by permit.
I'm, I don't like to do my thumb, but I will say permit-by-permit basis makes the most sense to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is airport economic and fiscal analysis requests for proposals. Chris Bailey, Director Bailey will be on, on page 28 of your, your agenda.
Director? So congratulations on the win this weekend.
Yeah. Go Air Force. We can't beat Army, but we'll take it where we can get it. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So this item is an update for you and an opportunity to provide you with information on this project, which is concerning that the airport, before we issued the request for proposals, which is planned to, we're in the beginning stages of that process, so it takes several weeks to get that done. As way of background, the city owns and operates the Albany Municipal Airport. The airport has one runway, just over 3,000 feet long, and it's a general aviation airport. Almost all of the activity at the airport is either private pilots flying their personal aircraft, or student pilots working toward their pilot licensing. It is possible for small business jets or a small turboprop-type aircraft to use our airport, but it comes at higher risk because of the runway length. The airport is, as you probably know, heavily constrained on all four sides, which impacts its growth potential. And we can do a whole lot more discussion about the airport and the airport layout plan, but that's not really the purpose of, of this discussion item. Airports are intended to be financially self-supporting. And in our case, the revenue comes from lease revenue, where the city owns the land and leases the land for private hangar development. We have some city-owned buildings and hangars that we lease. And then we get a small portion of fuel sales, and that makes up the bulk of the operating revenue. Revenue for capital projects comes from a portion of the city's transient lodging tax that's set aside for airport capital use. The city has also been very successful in getting state funds to provide the bulk of the matching dollars for federal capital grants. So we've been able to judiciously spend our limited capital funding. There aren't many expenditures in the operation and maintenance budget of the airport, but those that are there are rising faster than our revenue is rising, which has resulted in an operating deficit during this biennium. We saw this coming, but we didn't anticipate the rate that increased over the COVID years and afterwards. So our reserves were used faster than we had anticipated. At the same time, at the last city council strategic planning session, an objective was added to the city's strategic plan to explore options for the best and highest use of the airport for the community. So these two factors, the operating deficit and the strategic plan objective, have led us to develop this request for proposals. Let's see. We don't expect the cost of the RFP to reach a threshold that requires council approval, and we're not required to bring it to you prior to issuing it. However, we felt that because of the significance of what we're discussing and the potential for misunderstanding, that I should come to you today and tell you what this RFP is all about before it actually gets published. The ultimate result of this work will be one or two reports that describes options for the airport. The first task that we're asking the consultants to do is to analyze the current operating and financial structure of the airport and describe steps to continue its use. We're also asking them to identify any obstacles to modifying its current use. Next, we'll ask them to evaluate alternatives for the airport, including preservation of its current use, enhancement of its use, or modification of the use, with some reallocation of property for non-aviation development. That would mean lodging, restaurants, or some other commercial use of airport property that's not currently in the airport layout plan, but may provide some economic benefits. The last option would be closure and redevelopment of the property for non-aviation use. The final report is going to provide a detailed fiscal and economic analysis of each of those options, and a discussion of the regulatory, operational, legal, and other steps that each option would require. For instance, one question that may need to be answered is, what are the FAA rules or regulations concerning non-aviation use of airport property? And how would that impact potential additional development at the airport? In particular, the topic of closure is very complex in regulatory, financial, future economic, and policy perspectives. And that is going to require significant research. This report will be presented to the council probably in the late spring or summer of 2025 for discussion and direction. We're not asking the consultants to make a recommendation to the council, but rather to provide the council with as much information as it can that would support a decision from the council in providing directions to staff on how best to move forward with the airport. And one last thing, just to be clear, this is not an effort to close the airport. That is a fear that has been communicated to the council and staff many times over many years. We've identified four options, and there may be more options. And only one of those involves airport closure. This is really an effort to identify ways to keep the current operation of the airport afloat into the future. And to discuss other options with the council, provide information to address the strategic plan goal, to make the best use of this asset for the community. So that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
So I just had a question about, so timing would be the end of '25 or '24, as far as getting RFPs back? Then what's the schedule?
We anticipate receiving proposals in early 2025. And then we would probably have the report, will take a few months after that. So summer, next summer, is when we anticipate having final reports for you.
Counsel?
You mentioned at the end of four options. I only read three. I want to make sure I'm not missing anything. One, consider current conditions at the airport and identify financial needs to maintain its current use. Enhancements to the current use, which would be modification of the airport to incorporate development options alongside aviation, or an option through is closure and redevelopment. development options alongside aviation, or an option three was closure and redevelopment of the property for non-aviation. What was the fourth that I'm missing?
So it's current operation, enhancing current operation, which means how can we attract more hangar development, or, you know, other current uses that we have at the airport, attract more aviation-related businesses. The third is modification with a non-aviation commercial use. We don't have a whole lot of property, but it's pretty common at larger airports to have hotels, restaurants, et cetera, onsite. I'm not, we're just not sure how feasible that is with our property, but it's something to look into. And then the fourth one is closure and redevelopment.
Okay. Sorry, I just misunderstood the enhancements and modifications being considered both different pathways.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. I'll start with Counselor Doudanazour.
I don't have anything except feeling healthy after being sick and having a lot of extra time with my family.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Couple of things this evening. I was invited to speak to the local chapter of the American Association of University Women on Saturday at the Mennonite Village, and we had about 20 people who attended. It was a nice talk. They had invited me to talk about current issues facing the council and anything else that I could come up with. I mostly was there to answer questions, and because I do that better than giving a speech. But I'm, I will report that as I drove in the driveway next to Quail Run on 47th Avenue, I was greeted by about 20 turkeys in someone's yard. And the topic of turkeys came up during the meeting. And thank goodness, Mr. Abin, who was the turkey expert who spoke to us a couple of times, was there. And he, he took the meeting from, from that point on, while turkeys were the topic. He has been working closely with Fish and Wildlife to get going on setting up a, there's a game officer who has been assigned turkey patrol or something, and, and they're, this is the prime season for nipping the, the problem in the bud, I guess, because they're not breeding, they're not raising their young, their young are up and now part of the, grown up and they're part of the problem. So he gave a very long, detailed description of, of how they're getting the equipment together and getting ready to go out and get those birds. I was very glad that he had current information to share.
So they, they are going to be, get, going and harvesting maybe some of the turkeys?
If harvesting is necessary. The, the, apparently, the, have, our adoption of the ordinance that prohibits feeding them allows them to remove the birds. They can, I guess, trap them and remove them. No, they can't relocate them. It's a one-way trip. But, so, they're, they're, they're working together, and everybody at the village is really excited about it. I'm glad to hear that. I was picking up campaign signs over the week prior in, across the road in Columbus Greens Mobile Park, and I saw two dozen of them there.
Wow.
That was quite a sight. There were a bunch of, like, four of the big Toms in, in the middle of the circle, like they owned the place. And then all these hens around them. There were probably, I don't know, 25 or 30 of them there, right in somebody's yard. I thought maybe they'd gone out for breakfast instead of staying at the village, but... So the, the problem is being handled. They also had some questions about the famous school, speed, school speed zone behind South Albany High School on Waverly Drive. And I passed along that information to engineering this morning, and they're going to be looking into that. They're, one of the residents was concerned about pedestrian and bike safety for people who are biking through there. People don't seem to know where the zone starts and stops, and, or that 20 miles an hour is a thing. So there, that's all being handled capably by engineering staff. Thank you very much. The other thing that I wanted to mention, this is based on a topic that came up at this meeting. We were talking about growth and the, sponsored by, I mean, prompted by a question about the three very large apartment building developments that are happening on Gary Street, south of Grand Prairie, or south of Queen. We talked about growth, we talked about middle housing, and that prompted, one of the gentlemen approached me after the meeting and said, you know, I've heard that, he says, where are all these people coming from? He says, I've heard that people are leaving Oregon. And that's true. And you can get current information on that. Today, this morning, or this afternoon, the Oregon on the Record program on KLCC was an interview with a business and technology reporter from the Oregonian, who has been studying population loss in Oregon and Washington, Oregon and California primarily. But it was about a 25-minute report that was fascinating. Last year, 130,000 people moved out of Oregon, and a, a smaller amount moved in. So net loss of population. And the reasons for, for why they leave are anybody's guess. It could be weather, it could be the tax climate, although our, we, we don't have a sales tax here, so that's, it's different in other places. But people are going to Arizona, Colorado, Utah, and Idaho. 3,300 people, Oregonians went to Idaho last year. And there are people who are coming here, mostly people from California and Washington. Anyway, there was, it's really, really, really interesting information. So if you have a chance...
Can you send that link to Allison?
I'll try. I'm not good at that, but I'll, I'll give it a try.
Did you name, did you tell us where you got this information?
KLCC.
KLCC, thank you.
And the pro, the program is called Oregon on the Record, and you can find it on their website.
Oh, it was a radio program you mentioned, KLCC, so...
There's also an article, I read it today. I can forward it if you want.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to read that. Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll send over the article, yeah.
Yeah, send it to Allison, she'll get it out to all of us. Okay, Counselor Newton, excuse me, I already went once. Counselor McGee?
I'll save it for Wednesday, thank you.
Counselor Novak?
Thank you. I do have something, and I want to thank Mr. Kidd for bringing this to my attention. I don't always see what the media puts out there, but I appreciate being made aware of the fact that on November 4th, a company that's currently located in Corvallis on the HP site, it's called Valiscor LLC, they submitted a site plan application to move to residential Albany. Valiscor LLC produces all kinds of highly toxic compounds and chemicals. Fluorine is, is one of them. And former Counselor Rich Callum noted in a comment that there would be thousands of pounds of fluorine, iodine, and chlorine. And so I looked up a 606-page document from the National Service Center for Environmental Publications, huge report, and, oh, it's a fluorine, its compounds, and air pollution, a biography with abstracts, for those of you who have way too much time on your hands. There was section G devoted 48 pages to the effects of fluorine and its compounds on human health. There were then another 49 pages from this 606-page report devoted to the impact on plant and livestock, plants and livestock. So it has huge negative effects on human health and plants and livestock, and that's only part of the report. I am just bringing this up because I am dearly hoping that our city planning division is aware of and taking into consideration the effects that the manufacture of fluorine have on human health, plants, and livestock. I hope they're aware, and I'd like to think that the city does care about such things, because I find it extremely concerning. I don't know if this will come before the council, but if it does, I hope the council that is both sitting here now and those who will be coming in will remember this and take these, these things into consideration, because there, there are people who are very upset, and rightly so. And now that I'm aware of it, I'm also upset about it.
Do us a favor and send that article or link to...
Yeah. Yeah, it's, Mr. Kidd sent it to all of us.
This was the Hasso Haring article that I sent to you.
The blog post.
I've been deep in what I'm doing, so it's...
It's, it's just mind-boggling to me, because they are in an area, right now in Corvallis, on the HP facility, that whole, that whole campus is not in the midst of residential housing. It's well away from schools and homes and all these things. It's kind of out there relatively...
Nice to work there.
Yeah. So that seems to me a fine place to leave their toxic production, and they want to bring it to Albany, and they've submitted their site plan, and I am just on the inside screaming, no! No, no, no.
So...
Do we have to consider everything that comes before us?
You do. And, and yeah, the purpose, I sent the email out was to, to remind everybody that it, it's a staff decision. But if that staff decision's appealed, it goes to Planning Commission, and if they appeal it from the Planning Commission, it goes to City Council.
Right.
So I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, so that we didn't discuss it and stuff ahead of time, so...
I have two cents to add.
And Chris is up. Okay.
I have two cents. Any kind of industry like this, when it comes in, is evaluated by the Industrial Pretreatment Program, which specifically is looking at discharges to the sanitary sewer system and protecting the sewer system and the wastewater treatment plant. But they work very closely with DEQ, so there is a layer of review from staff and coordination with DEQ and EPA on whatever chemicals are used there to require them to store them safely, maintain them, et cetera, et cetera. So there are lots of facilities in town that have lots of chemicals that they use in their processes, and we do work closely to manage those and make sure they have appropriate spill and protection procedures in place, along with state and federal agencies. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Counselor Montague?
Yeah, I wanted to just let everybody know that we are currently recruiting for several positions in the citizen advisory groups. So if you are listening at home, or some of you in, in council chambers are interested in serving on one of those advisory groups, please go to the city website and apply, because I know I have a couple vacancies, I don't know about the rest of the council. So please apply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, but you didn't give me an opportunity to respond to the issue that I had presented when, when Director Bailey came up. I, I thought I have a right to respond, do I not?
Well, it's, it's better we don't talk about it right now, because it may come in front of you for a vote later on. And so then we can, then you'll be able to ask her all kinds of questions, and she'll probably have a, somebody will have a staff report. I don't know if it'll be Director Bailey or not, but that would be a time. Because right now, if, if we keep talking about it, see, then, if, if the whole council talks about it now, then we're going to all be precluded from voting on it. So we don't want to, don't want to do that.
Okay, well, I don't want to mess that up. I just wanted to say that I appreciated what she put out, what she said, but I also really hope the council will bear what I said in mind, and also what the people who have commented on that have said.
Thank you.
It's not the right place.
I, I've got nothing, I'm just tired, so. Been up since 5:00 this morning at my desk. So I've turned over to City Management's Report. City Management's Report?
I have nothing further, Mayor.
With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 4:40 PM. I'll see you all at 6:00 PM on Wednesday night. Thank you.